Alright. There. MATLAB here. Go ahead and sign in real quick. Alright, so welcome everyone to your conversational tools midterm review. You guys have your midterm tomorrow, so I recommend get a piece of paper and something to write with. We're gonna go over some things. I've taken a look at your exam. And I'm gonna relay information that you've covered over the course of the semester and hopefully some of it will help you out with your exam. I'm not gonna give you any answers, but I will give you the tools necessary content you guys covered to do well. So the goal is you guys should all get A's tomorrow. Alright, who's not gonna get an A? No, it's not. It's not what I wanna hear, man. Yeah, we'll finish letting everyone get signed in. I'm gonna go ahead and shut the door. Alright, before I get, does anyone have any questions they gotta get off their chest right now or whatever? Alright, cool. Awesome. Alright, so basically so far throughout your guys semester, you've covered two programs, Excel and MATLAB. Excel should be kinda new to everyone still. You know, I'm assuming that you guys didn't cover it too much in K-12, you know, basically your high school. You might have did some sort of coding, so I think you guys have a little bit more experience coding over Excel. Now, if I'm wrong, go ahead and say so. If I accidentally say something making an assumption either you guys don't know or do know something and you need me to explain it, just go ahead and say, "Hey, can you explain that a little bit more?" Don't be afraid to interrupt. But yeah, ask questions. This is a little bit more lax environment than a classroom. Alright, so are we all clear on that? Cool, alright. So real generally, we're gonna start from Excel from a top-down view. Excel's composed of a few main parts. You have your ribbon up top, okay? But when you first open up Excel, you have what's called, anyone? Sign in, man. So what do you call, what do you call this when you first sign in, when you first start your program?
A workbook.
A workbook, alright. And a workbook is composed of worksheets. So, and you could add multiple worksheets which if you can see if you add on the bottom left-hand corner, alright? I just added two more sheets, so I have a total of three worksheets, alright? Each worksheet is comprised of vertical columns, which are broken down with adjacent rows, alright? So when you have an intersection of a row and column, you have what's called a cell, alright? Each cell is its own little entity where you can create a function or variables for a variable or do other tasks that's necessary. So it's important that you understand the basic structure of Excel, what's a worksheet, what's a workbook, what's a cell, what's a column and a row, alright? Give me one second, I gotta write. Alright. So we covered a few things in class. So you know, when we sit there and create a variable, we assign either a hardcoded number into it, like for example 34. Or we could create a function, 2 plus 2, where we get an answer of 4. Or when we do create a function, we can make references and hard code it. So we can put a direct input or a variable or a reference into a function, alright? So your function again could reference a cell or you put it as direct input, alright? Oh, one thing I forgot. So you guys all know you get three sheets of paper, right? So for your exams, right, you get three sheets of paper that you can write your notes on.
How many questions would be in the exam?
So right now, it's about five sections. Some sections have 10 questions, multiple choice questions. Some are, there's nothing like directly fill in the blank, but they're a little bit more complex than just a plain multiple choice. It's gonna change, so I don't wanna give you an exact number, but it's pretty much a 50-minute exam and I'd expect you guys to take about 50 minutes to do it. So there's a couple of questions that I personally thought were easy. Some may be a little bit on the tougher side, but overall, I think it's a fair exam. So everything that you've done in your homework, your labs, your class, so covered in lecture is gonna be there. So I would sit there definitely 100% just kinda glance over the lecture notes that Professor Yiyao We's put out. So answer your question.
Yeah, would we have like, have like, write a code saying, as it always is?
You don't necessarily have to write a code, like a MATLAB code. But having said that, if you saw code or a function in Excel, you gotta kinda know what's going on with it. So you gotta be able to interpret a code. Is that, is that better? Alright. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and sign in real quick, too. Real quickly, what I said was that we have three pages on the exam. Figure 50 minutes, you know, to do the exam. The only thing I really covered was, oh, it's on YouTube. I'll put it on YouTube. You can watch it, whatever you missed. Alright, it's not too much. Oh, okay, so I basically went over the functions. The one thing to remember is referencing. Probably been focused a lot in Excel. So remember what your different referencing is. So if I sit there and have this particular cell, okay? Yes, everyone sees okay, right? Everyone sees fine? Alright, so if I have this cell, and I reference in this case E7, alright? And if I push F4, it automatically populates the dollar signs. Dollar signs does
It locks it.
Locks that one.
Correct. It makes the absolute right. So big money for you guys, dollar signs, you know? There's three different kinds. That, your cell's comprised of rows and columns. So when I sit there and remove one dollar sign, in this case, hotkey F4, you know, I'm making the row variable, or I'm sorry, the column variable and the rows locked in at 7. Again, there are the alternate where the columns locked in and the rows variable and they're removed. But basically, understand what referencing is and what the dollar signs are for absolute referencing. Alright, so in, so far in Excel, you guys have covered what functions? So if you think I homework 1, that's, it's not a function. So average is 1, okay? Alright. Gotta hope I spelled that right. That'd be embarrassing. Alright, sum?
Max.
Max, min?
If.
ATAN. ATAN2.
Alright, so if is a function, but it's a logic-based function, so I'm gonna take that out for right now. But ATAN, ATAN2, alright?
Count.
Count? What's the other one?
Degree.
Yep, degree, you can say is another one. Think about like more homework, what you had to do for homework, maybe a project. V lookup's 1? PMT?
V lookup, H lookup.
Yeah, V lookup, H lookup. I kind of put those kind of in the same thing. So PMT is another one, but what was one that you guys did on the project?
FB, future value.
FB, future value. So those, any other ones? I think there's like mean.
Standard deviation.
Yeah, standard deviation. Alright, SDV. It's either statistics or nursing, one of the two. Yeah, S, there you go.
Course.
Alright. So there's some, anyone think of any other ones? Alright, I'm gonna tell you about half of them you gotta know. And when I say when you gotta know, so if we sit there and look, we'll take for example
Can you tell us which half?
Sure.
Like which ones?
Half of these. Alright, I can't tell you which ones exactly. Let's see, PMT is a good one. Alright. My advice to you, when you sit there do your sheet, okay, what I would personally do is I would sit there, take command, and just like how it kinda says in Excel, if I wanna use payment, I would take a piece of real estate on my paper, write PMT, and I would write down the rate. And I'd write into something that I could understand. Rate, if you don't remember, or if this doesn't make sense to you, you go up to the search, come up top here, and they're all fully explained here. This is one of the crutches that you guys got. You gotta kinda make work where you don't have access to that help. You know, it kinda sucks that you guys don't have the capability to do it, like your exam's on the program itself. But on the same note, it's kinda like a badge on it to do it on paper, so good and bad to it. Anyhow, so rate, you can write interest rate, alright? That's what I would understand, you know, interest percentage. If you read it, it's for, it goes on a whatever basis you could sit there and write it down for you to understand. The next is the NPR. So number of payments. Alright. Payments. And then the final one, principal value I have to do this. Or present value. Alright, so I had to put principles. Alright, and that's why I kinda understand, or I write it down, so when I sit there and look at my sheet, I can look and say, hey, whether it's payment, whether it's V lookup, whether it's average, whether it's ATAN2, you know, think about what's been stressed throughout the semester. I kinda say, hey, those are the ones I gotta know for sure, you know? So Yeah. Interest percent. So the PMT command, like you did on your homework. But I wrote down the options that I need to put down kinda so I understand, you know? Don't copy this. Unless you understand this, you can look at it and say, okay, I get that. Don't copy it, you know? I wouldn't use PV, you know? I just, that doesn't click to me. So I'd write down the principle, which is the term I would understand instead. There's a difference between ATAN and ATAN2. Know the difference there, you know? Which, if we look real quick, you know, we just type, we put ATAN2, we see it's asking for our X number first and then Y. And then if we go to ATAN itself, it's just asking for a number. Alright? You kinda understand when you're doing ATAN, what's, why it's doing it and kinda the principle of it. You have your four quadrants. Anyone have trick recently? Alright. So there was a saying that, you know, for what's negative, negative. You know, here you have both negative or both positive. Here you have negative cosine, so we'll put a sine. Alright, here they're both negative. Here your sine's negative, so. Alright, and I forgot what the saying is. You can probably look it up online. It's a after my time type thing. But understand if you do have two negative numbers or your cosine's negative, which quadrant is supposed to be in? So if you get an answer and you put in ATAN, you know, the question is for example, ATAN2, negative three halves, we'll say one half. Which quadrant is that supposed to be in? Okay? Alright, so this is like basic, you gotta know that type thing. Alright, so V lookup is one that you've used multiple times. You guys used it in lab, you used it in homework. I can almost guarantee you that's probably gonna be on there. So think about what you've covered multiple times, you know? So know what they are. So V lookup, same thing. That's one, kinda understand what all the little the options are. And so if you put in, like, if there is a command and you have to look at it, what you would expect? So if you sit there saying, if I reference this cell, I would expect to say 34 is gonna come out, you know? As I mentioned before, your functions, you create formulas. What should we call it? You create formulas either by referencing cells or directly inputting a number. Just like in here, I referenced in the first part, I referenced a cell, second one, I directly inputted a number. Let's see what else Excel. So I had to bring my notes. I had to write notes before this. Alright, so Excel-wise, just go over your labs, go over your your homework, kinda glance over the notes. I wouldn't be surprised to see something that you've seen on your lab and homework in one way or another, kinda regurgitate or reapply for you guys on your exam. Make sense? Alright? But is there any questions regarding Excel? No questions, not one? You guys are all experts, you gods in Excel?
Not even close.
Not even close? Any concerns about Excel? Ask.
How to use V lookup. I tried.
So V lookup, I don't know if it's better to just bring up the homework. We'll do this here. So V lookup. Then 20. See, we could drag 6V and then we'll assign A, B, C, D, E, F. Kind of plus. Kind of a joke, sorry. Alright. And then we'll just say here 30, no. 5 should work okay. So if we do our V lookup, alright, V stands for vertical, alright? We're gonna look up our first initial value, alright? And then we're gonna apply it to this array. Alright, array is another word for a matrix, another word for a table, but array, alright? And then in the end, well, I gotta lock that, too. So because I'm gonna drag it down, I'm gonna wanna lock it. In the end, I wanna sit there, produce the second value. Ah, is it because I'm over the number? Yeah, well, under, let's do this. And then 55. So I was outside of the range, that's why I had an NA there. But to kinda quickly go over it again. Alright, so when you put in your command V lookup, what you wanna do is consider this number here, alright? But what do you wanna consider it to? You wanna consider it to this table where you have two columns of values. Your first column, Excel has no clue what's what, okay? We know what's what. We know this is what we wanna look up. We know this is the end product. You know, so if someone gets an 11, they're gonna get an A, okay? We know that we wanna take this, we wanna apply it to this table, just kinda reference this table, see what would come out. And so when it finds it, it says, alright, 11 falls between this range, so it's this row here, okay? And then we want it to output the second column. Had it been a third column, we could've said third column, so on and so forth. So that's where, when this finishes up, you get an A here, you get an E, and then a whatever there, B. Yeah? Yeah? Alright, any other questions? Now's the time to ask. Alright, and then just kinda go over the commands you used and just understand. You know, just like I said, take a little piece of real estate, you get three pages. Write down the stuff you used, how to do it. If you did a help, what would come up on it, you know? You guys more than likely already know it, but it's a lot different situation, environment where you're in a test and it's a little bit more stressful than trying to remember things on the fly, so is there any, equip yourself with the necessary tools? Alright, we good? Yeah, yeah, alright. So then we will go into our good friend MATLAB.
How many questions are there of Excel compared to MATLAB? Like is there like 50/50 on that test?
I wanna say, so Professor Yiyao We said he's gonna remove some of the questions. I asked him, or he asked me what I thought of it. I thought the exam's doable. I thought it was a fair exam. But it's a little bit on the longer side, so there's five main sections. The majority of the sections have 10 questions each. So if you figure in a perfect world, you know, you guys got 50 minutes for your class, but by the time he gets everything handed out, maybe make a few comments, probably five minutes are already gone. So that's where I figured, maybe it's a little bit on the longer side. So he said he plans on removing some. So I don't have an exact number of questions, but the makeup is about half and half, I wanna say. For the most part, everything looked to be multiple choice.
If it wasn't multiple choice, how would it be? Would it be like fill in the blank type thing or?
So there's some
Sure, all.
Okay. There's a couple fill-in-the-blank type-ish things. The ones, and thanks for asking because I totally forgot to cover Excel, solver. Let's go over solver.
Well, you know that's on it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's kind of a given. I think he's, every class, he's kinda said something about solver. You guys did it in lab, you did it in homework, you did it in, so. Yeah, kinda sucked that I do it, I guess, you know?
Would the if statements also be, is that not it?
No, that's in there. Let's go ahead and cover that, too. Cause that's also been in every homework again. So, good thing, I forgot, I even blew it off here then. Alright, so let's go ahead and cover solver real quick. Be very aware of what everything is, alright, and what it's for. Set objective is your cell. Sure, yeah, everything is pretty much gonna be referencing some kind of cell or formula. But your set objective is your ultimate goal, alright? So when you set your objective, you wanna have this as a specific end result. You know, and that's where these come in. So remember, set objective and then your tool range, which is basically either you wanna find the max minimum value or you want that cell to be a specific value. Your set objective to be a specific value, alright? And then this part here, by changing variable cells, okay? Understand what it means by changing variable cells. So when you put input cells, it kinda sounds like a no-brainer, yeah, you're inputting a cell, but you're not technically inputting, alright? What you're doing is taking a cell, you're saying these particular cells here, whether it's a an array of them, alright? But you're giving solver or Excel the ability to change the values inside those cells. So you're changing those variable cells, okay? Understand what your constraints are. So who wants to give a shout, what's constraint?
Limitations.
Limitations is a good word. So kinda understand when you do this, kinda what happens and why. This, don't worry about. This bottom part, I don't think you have to worry about. I think it's something where you guys don't need to focus on. The most important thing is focusing on these particular sections here. Yeah? Any other questions on solver? So basically, solver is simply a tool. I mean, really, it's, you put in information, you're saying, I don't wanna do the math, I don't wanna do the work. Your computer do the work for me, you know, and say, give me what this should be.
If you mind, could we go over one real quick, like a quick example, just?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have like any problems on the set, like on hand, so we're just gonna kinda make stuff up.
So when it does come to the test, is it gonna be like, he's gonna give us some values and be like, what would you make the constraints or what would you make your variable cells?
Or would he be more like label each part of it, like, like what we just saw?
Yeah.
Would he be like label what this is, is the set objective?
I would say both, but in different ways than you guys are probably thinking. So what he would, what I have seen, alright? Alright? You gotta kinda know, if you were given a question of you know, what, what would this title be? Okay, what is the name of this field? Alright, or what's the name of this field? Given four different choices to identify which one it is.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Alright, and you gotta remember multiple choice is always like there's two that are close and there's one that's gonna be it, you know? So kinda know what it is, you know, what to expect. On the same note, too, he's, I would expect to say, if you see this particular setup, what would you expect to find? What would you expect your answer to be? Okay, and it's not anything difficult or complex like you've done with the projects or the homework. It'd be something that you can figure out within a minute on an exam. But still enough to where you gotta kinda know, if you set this to minimum and you had two values, and you had two values, that you're, you're looking for the minimum of that one.
Would that be like the answer, like, what are you looking for as the minimum, or the maximum?
Yep, yep, if it's, if it says maximum of this cell, and he's asked, out of these four choices, a multiple choice choices, which one makes the most sense? You gotta be able to say, okay, well, if I look at this, it's asking for the maximum of this by changing this particular cell range. So you gotta be able to interpret what's being set on solver. And more than likely, it's not gonna be anything complex here. Alright, and you guys just don't have the time, and there's too many questions that just sit there, add that much complexity to it. So, Yao Yao We's pretty fair, at the end of the day, all, all his classes, everyone, I've already, you know, I've never, I haven't had him as a professor or instructor, but everyone said really good things, all my friends, so, I'd say you guys is in good shape with it, you know? But, yeah, just kinda understand what's being said here, and just remember, at the end of the day, if you don't know, twenty-five percent chance, you know? You know, always roll your, your, your guess, you know? Just kinda see what sounds right. If you could know this, alright, if you know these two, you already like half the battles there, you know? Yeah?
Alright.
So do you still want me to do a whole example of solver?
We can go over if a little bit.
I'm gonna go over if next, but.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, it's just, really know this top part, you know, like kinda, you don't need to know all the intricacies of the different algorithms used, you don't need to worry about the checkmark, just, this, 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 and then your constraints go in there.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so.
Nothing good, right? I stand with always.
I'm gonna just draw a little diagram on one of the sheets, just tiny look, label each section. This is what it looks like.
Oh, there's a little thing too. Alright, so if statements. Alright, write down, basically this, I've done enough where I just, you know, I gotta memorize, but kinda write down what these are, so, your if statement is basically creating a logic test, which is that first variable here. And logic to use in MATLAB, you're gonna use it at anything where you're gonna have some kind of binary algebra. Like, remember all your little symbols for if? So you're gonna have like equals, you're gonna have greater than equal, less than equal. This is not equal to, so it's basically greater or less than any particular number you'd have here, or, excuse, any number you'd have here. So let's say A four. Like that's, there's probably one more I'm missing, but, those are probably the, the more important ones here. So I know we haven't really covered not equal to, but it's different kind of each program, so MATLAB's gonna have a different, Python has a different, um, Excel has a different. But, let me do a quick scenario here, alright? A, B, sixteen, blue. Twenty-seven, alright? So in this case here, what we're gonna do is, if A is equal to A four. Alright, that's our logic test, so our, basically, we're, we're trying to find out if A is equal to A four, okay? What we could expect. So we have a true and a false statement that we need to add in or condition. Alright, if it's equal to that, then we're gonna make it equal to B, alright? If not, we'll just put down not equal.
You didn't put if at the beginning of that.
Oh, yeah. Look at that eagle eye over there, alright? So, now I do it on the next one, what should it be? Alright, now if I do it on the next one, what should it be? You got sixteen, what did you say? Twenty-seven, what do you guys say in the back?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, over there, A Aaron, what do you say? What if? So, if I go to the next one, which one do you think it'll be? Alright, so twenty-seven. Alright, so understand, when you're doing if, what's going on, why? When you, if you're given a function that looks exactly like that, alright? What it's supposed to be, so, the first two were not equal, because if you look at the logic here, A one or A two was not equal to A four, okay? But in our third case, we saw A four was equal to A four, which, you know, the magic is happening. So, our true condition applied, and so we got that twenty-seven. So, why wasn't sixteen, was because it wasn't conditionally left, alright? All that's real important, you know, that's, that's stuff you gotta know. Same thing with B threes. Yeah?
Hold on, I'm a little uh, so, when you, like, coded A two is equal to A four, right?
Yeah.
Or like those, that column?
Yeah.
And then you did, what was the next statement, the Bs, what was that supposed to mean?
So let me make a little bit more space here, alright? Let's stay, alright, cool. Alright, so we put our if statement, then if I wanna do an if logic, alright? Our first condition, which is our logic test, is, we're asking, is A two equal to A four, alright? Yeah, so A two is equal to A four, so is A equal to C, alright? In this case, we know the answer, it's a simple little problem, we just know it just like that, okay? But if, in another case, I could be having, you know, a little bronchian with a Hamiltonian here, alright, and make it a hell of a lot more complex, and say, yeah, you guys tell me if, just looking at it, you know, so, just to keep it simple, we just add A and C. Anyhow, our first condition is, if it's true. If this statement is true, then we're gonna spit out this. If this statement is false, then we're gonna put out this.
Okay.
So ultimately, at the end of the day, that's what's being, on if then statement's working. Just keeps throwing me off.
That's why last one's twenty-seven, because A four is equal to A four.
Exactly, exactly. But, I can tell you for sure, you need to be able to do that on the exam. Kinda look at a function that's already preset up, investigate it, and know what the end result's gonna be. And you'll probably have to do it multiple times. Yeah?
So if is on the exam?
I don't know.
If you put in a brackets for it, does it lock in the cell or no?
No, the only thing that locks in your cell is those dollar signs. So the absolute reference, and that's something you, you definitely need to know, dollar signs and absolute reference, what happens, okay? So when I sit there, have an absolute reference of, let's say I wanna reference this, okay, and I wanna absolutely reference it. What does that mean? Is that wherever I take this, it's gonna sit there, keep that cell input. So anywhere you put it on the board, the game's gonna say, hey, always reference that specific cell, alright? So that's important concept to understand and know. Alright, so we gotta get the MATLAB, cause I'm a little guy in time, and I totally forgot those two. Alright, first and foremost, what does MATLAB stand for?
MATLAB.
Besides MATLAB, math.
Math laboratory.
No?
Mathematical, I don't know. It's something, I remember reading it, it's something with mathematical or.
Not mathematical.
Math. I don't know, signed up for it.
What do you think it's for? Alright, um, A Aaron?
I don't know.
Yeah, alright, Matrix Laboratory, alright, know this, alright, you gotta understand what it is. Alright? What was probably my number one bitch about the homework? And I don't mean bitch in a bad way, I mean in the best possible way. I forgot this was recorded. It's all, it's a wider general viewing. Um, what was it, what was my biggest complaint?
Oh, the, the files. You didn't rece, you'd receive individual one.
Nah, not so much that, I, I, that I could own. The what?
The locator of the comments.
The comments, the comments. Alright? Always comment your code. Look, one, it makes it look good, two, it'll look like a pro, like, you could have the nerds over on the, the computer science bar and look at code, like, this guy knows what's going on, but, more so, it makes my life a lot easier when I got a grade, alright, so, the comment. That's easier to see, okay?
Exercise two, exercise two, separate.
Yeah, exactly, so comment, anything following this is your comment, so hold on, alright? And MATLAB will generally ignore everything after that. When you have two percentage signs, what does it mean?
Section break.
Section break, exactly, alright? Section break, title, alright? Generally speaking, it's not exactly a comment, okay? Let me stress that again, alright? If given a question, alright, which may or may not be on the exam, if it's taken out or not, okay? If you have four options, and two of the options are asking, what's the title, or what's the section break, or was it comments? Know which one's the correct one, okay?
Is it um, two percentage signs before the command, or um, one at the beginning, one at the end?
Anywhere, it's, it's two percentage signs together. So even if you have one, you're automatically making it a remark, okay, or a comment.
So one means comment, two, section breaker title.
Exactly.
And it doesn't matter what order, order they're in, I mean, like, when you're doing the beginning.
If you wanna put this percentage sign before this one, or a.
No, 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 that's not.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
I can either say it man or it's a funny.
No, sorry, you can put either or, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So, there's no particular order, you can have your code here, alright? Um, let's see, my code is ten, go to twenty, okay? I can sit there, put a comment here, and write, this is old, alright? Or, let's say I'm doing my programming, and I'm troubleshooting, and I got shit that's not working outright, or um, crap's not working outright. I'll comment my code temporarily, just to make this all green, and skip this, the, the, skip this step, so I can sit there, try, kinda troubleshoot where I might have other problems. So, and you can always go back and erase stuff, I mean, just a few clicks away, you know? So understand commenting, um, just not for the exam, for, for in the future in general. And if it's asked on the exam, this is a comment, this is a section breaker title.
So, you can write a comment, or you can, you can do like a function, and then write a comment. But can you start a comment, end a comment, and then do a function after a comment, or would you have to put the, the function? Like, you can write a code, and then do a comment.
Yeah.
But can you write a comment, and then do a code?
Yeah, just, just like I said, so here's my code, okay? If I, let's say I'm writing my code, and, and things aren't working right, I, let's say I got some math up here, math up here, and this math might, might not be messing up my, my end math here, okay? So what I will do, during my programming, I'll comment this code, and it'll bypass this. I don't wanna erase it, cause who knows, maybe I'll get down here and I'll forget about it, you know, or I'll forget to put it back in, or.
I'm talking about on the same line, like, can you,
So you want.
Can you start and end a comment before you start a code?
So like an Oreo cookie, kinda have your comment in the middle?
Yeah.
And have it that quirky white stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, nah, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think it, it's, that's smart.
So when you put the comment, you go to the next line and put the next code in, yeah?
Yeah, so I mean, your, your thought ends, so whenever you put a comment, as soon as you, you push the return, or the, the enter, you're gonna actually start your next line of code, and so, new line. Um, the only thing I don't know is, do that, or a comma, but I mean, it's kinda.
It's not gonna be on the.
It's not gonna be on the exam, let's focus more a little bit on the exam, and that's the one of the stuff I'd have to double check, you know?
So I shouldn't put that on the sheets that we get for those.
What, the, no, you want the comments.
Okay, that, that's gonna be on the exam.
Yes, comments, the section title, but going that in-depth on where the comments, yeah, don't. Alright. Alright. So, common commands that you're pretty much gonna use almost all the time, alright? Whoever came last week, Thursday, or the prior, knows that I start out my homework usually with two commands. Who remembers, anyone remembers?
Name and.
Besides the name and homework, be your name. So clear's one of them.
CLC.
CLC the other, alright? Are these important commands?
Yes.
Okay, who knows what they are?
One, there's the command window, and then there's the variables.
Which one's which?
Clear.
Clear?
Clears the variables.
Okay.
CLC clears the command.
Alright, so the technical term, let me, alright, clear, command, window, alright? And then the other one was, remove item. From workspace. Alright? Clear, command, alright? I don't remember which one's which, I've done, I've done it so many times, I just, by nature, I do both. So, I actually had to look it up. Now, when you're sitting there doing your studying, alright? Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you're not gonna break anything in, in MATLAB. MATLAB will break itself. Alright, but if you ever have questions, go to the top, and this is one of the things like where I, I was saying about Excel, when you write your, your commands, and then put the, the different variables. Sit down with MATLAB, become good friends with it, and kinda ask, hey, what happens if I put A tan two, alright? What do I need, and it's gonna tell you exactly your different variables you need. It'll also tell you a description, okay? So, Professor Yao Yao We has. This particular assignment here, or lecture notes, lecture, is probably one you kinda wanna go over, and glance over, and see what exam, what examples are there.
Do you prefer us to look over examples over others?
Yeah, there's gonna be one I'm gonna bring up here in a second, but kinda know what. But kinda know what, what needs to be applied, so if you put absolute x, you know? What's gonna come up? Alright, and it also gives you the examples, so, I use the help actually quite a bit, a lot of times I just, a lot of commands, I don't remember a lot of them. So, it kinda gives you an idea of, if you put absolute negative five, it's gonna spit out y five. Without having to go in MATLAB and read, read metal wheel. Um, and if you're really, I'm rambunctious enough and you really wanna see it. Click on the last clip. And you run it there, you know? Just like that, so directly off the help, you can always get those options there. Um, so looking at these here. One that I've stressed a few times already, I could say it's been stressed a lot in lectures, been stressed in labs, it's been stressed in homeworks. Out of all these functions, which one do you guys think might be on the test? Might not be on the exam? Well, someone said so. Atan two, you guys agree? Yeah, you guys, you, you seen it enough, so that's one I could probably say if you were gonna bet that's gonna be on the exam. I would probably bet with you, alright? Um, know these. Primarily, some of them aren't the same as Excel, one I even got wrong before when I said this was on Excel, right? STD. It's not just for nurses. Alright, or mean, what does mean do?
Average.
Average, in Excel, what do you put?
Average, A B G.
Yeah. So that's, that's kinda, put those in, go to the help, kinda say, hey. When I put average. You know, it gives you exactly what it is, and kinda know what, what you have to put. Specifically. When we're doing MATLAB notation similar to this, okay? Which is gonna segue into another very important part. So when we have, in this case, we want a mean. Let's say A equals mean, alright, and I have uh, what is it, four by three, alright? So if I put down zero, semicolon, one, semicolon. Three, semicolon, four, okay? What will this output? Four rows. Correct, correct, so this is gonna be your vertical matrix. Alright, and this is gonna create a four by one. Right. One by four. Yeah. Yeah, no, columns first and rows. Four by one. Alright? If we roll it.
I think it's row and column.
Just zero, one, one.
Oh, first row.
Yeah, so it's three, yeah, yeah, it is row and column, I screwed up. So one by four. Alright? Final answer. Alright, so in this case, if we write down five, six, seven, A will put kinda commas here to help see, okay? And this, we should see a
Four by one.
Four by one, and it's gonna
Horizontal.
Horizontal. Four by one, alright? So understand your vertical and your horizontal. What happens when you put semicolons, and in this case, your commas? Yeah, they leave blanks, you can leave blanks, I just did the commas though, kinda emphasized the space there. Simply a space.
So when it's the semicolon, it's vertical, regular comma, it's horizontal?
Yeah, so when you make an array, alright? So when you make an array. You one, two, three, four. This signifies a new row, alright? So you end up with a two by two.
So with the, the numbers like one by four, it's always row, column, right, in that order?
Um, it's always gonna be the same, so it's always I'm more used to using symmetric matrices, so I heard things kinda three by three, so I have to double check. But, so in this case here. It's, it's always gonna be, it would be one column, four rows, right? Yep, yep, exactly. So here is first column, then it goes to the next one, second column, next one. And so on, this one has all four in the first, first column, so it's one whole row. So, kind of, break down those, look over the help with those. Um, another one with these, kinda look at some of these, know them. These here. Did you guys cover these in class?
In lab.
In lab? Alright, so so know that.
So look over the random numbers.
Yeah, know these here, so go to MATLAB, look up rand or grand N. Alright? And kinda see, if you wrote it a specific way. Let's see, let's get an example. It's a little bit more. Alright, so if you wrote it like that, what you would get? Um. Maybe this one might be better. Alright, here's a, a five by five matrix, so this will create a five by five matrix. Here creates a ten by two. Um. So just kinda understand, but go write down what they do, here's the, already says, you know? But if you're asked a question. And then let's say it's a a ten by twenty matrix, which is more likely it's not, but you kinda understand it's gonna create a matrix, ten rows, twenty columns. Alright? Um, then remember your matrix operators, so when you do your matrix math to things, so multiply, addition, stuff like that. Kinda what's going on? Go over in this.
Will we have to go over Gauss?
Um. It's on this slide, I would say kinda know what this all means. So, in this particular case, you have a random set of data times the standard deviation and the mean, okay? So who understands that? You do?
Yeah, it's like fifteen hundred numbers. Then standard deviation two and a half, with a ma- with a mean of three. It's a little spit out, or no, it'll spit out, not fifteen hundred numbers, it's five hundred numbers. I don't remember what the one.
I can read the example. Let's put it down in like, I guess, in everyday people's terms. If you had to go, let's say over by the union. And go by bird king, if they still got bird, I haven't gone over there for a long time, I don't, they still got bird king there, but and if you had to say, eh, I'm doing Gaussian random numbers over in CAS, you know, and they ask, what's that?
Oh, it's um, giving you I don't know how to explain it in real day terms.
That's cool, that's cool, you tried, that's right. Alright, so basically you're taking a random set of numbers, okay, in this case, we're gonna take a matrix of N one and two, and dot, 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 all the way to the N one, dot, 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 alright? And we see here, we take a random set of numbers and we apply standard deviation, we multiply it by standard deviation. What is standard deviation?
You have the, the data difference, you're like, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's basically a ratio, it's, it's not, it's a unitless number of how much it differs. So whatever your unit is of this, it's that, so, if there's only a variance of one percent. And let's say this number here is a hundred. And this one's one, okay? When you multiply your standard deviation. Okay, to this number, you're gonna end up with like one and then point zero one, alright? So as you can see. The standard deviation, the amount of error being applied, or amount of change is being applied at the same rate. But they're different values, the end result's different values. It applies a relative change when you multiply it. Does that make sense? You would love that, man. There you go. Alright. So, um. Know that, this is important, I mean, this particular thing, so whoever asked it, this is a very important subject here. Alright, that you're gonna take your numbers, multiply to come up with this, this first part here. And then you're gonna take it to the mean. So you're gonna add it to the mean, so if our average was ninety-nine and ninety-nine, alright? I'll just say ninety-nine, we'd end up with two numbers being one hundred and ninety-nine point zero one. Alright? And so you're taking your random numbers, applying a relative standard deviation, so that, that change. And then putting it to your mean. Alright, everyone stand up like one quick second, get your blood flowing. And I, it's going a little bit longer than I want, but I want you guys to just like stand up, stretch.
I wish they did this in the two hour math class.
Yeah, tell them, tell them, you gotta stand up, usually they don't think about. Alright, we'll see you later. Alright. And I, I'm gonna try and hurry up, so I don't wanna tell you guys like too long.
Do we still have the lab on Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, alright, who, who's got lab tomorrow?
I don't know.
So I'm gonna be doing you guys' lab tomorrow. Is that a Sam? Or no, Wednesday, Wednesday, my bad.
Yeah, that's Wednesday.
I got you guys' Wednesday lab.
Oh, wait, Sam's it? Sam is.
Sam's gotta go to the doctor.
Oh.
So he's got an appointment that he's got. So I'm gonna cover for him. Um, yeah, I forgot, Wednesday, Thursday, now that. I'm thinking all those things too. Alright, yeah. Uh, March first lecture, go to MATLAB, go into the help, double check. Um, make sure you know this and the randoms, so this command would be a good command to kinda, to know, alright, like, pretty much how this is there, kinda understand it. Um, another thing is, and it's not on this one, but in your last homework, you guys did all the different formats.
Sorry.
More?
No, that's good.
Here? So. So remember the styles. I personally don't, this is where like I have to go to help and I have to look, and I don't remember, I'm the only one, I remember short g, I'm not mad at short e. But know what? Short, long, short e.
So long goes to fourteen decimal places, um, short goes to three.
You gotta remember it like that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, good, or power d, I can't, I'm not gonna remember it, I'd have it on my notes.
Oh, okay.
I'd have it like um, if you wanna write it out like that, so like let's say, what's a good one, a good example? I don't know.
Like what's the g and the e and stuff like that?
So use your engineering format, so like short engineering, so in this case here. Um, if you look short e, it truncates your number to a, a certain value. Um, long e is gonna be your your long amount, so there's a point where it cuts it off, long, like Pi was real good to show for the long. But I would pretty much have what you guys had on your, your homework.
I don't know.
So short g looks like it's a few. So you got short, short g. Long. G, um. It's a long itself. Just kinda, what you guys had in your homework, I would just copy that. You know, and I put it on my worksheet, cuz that way if any question was different, then, you know, I only saw one particular version of the exams. So, I'm trying to give you guys real generalized, to give you an idea of, hey. This is kinda
Think and use this on your
So you got three yeah, three pages, alright, or three
No, sheets, three sheets, he said, he, he said three to four, he doesn't care or something. Yep, he doesn't care how long it is either, like.
So like you, you can bring it two more.
Yeah, but he, he like, he literally said he doesn't care.
He said the side, he said the thickness, like
That counts, that counts.
He said like three sheets of, like one sheet of paper.
Yeah. He said that matters, he doesn't want anybody printing like a solid, like canvas sheet, just like, create a whole thing. Yeah, yeah, you get.
You have three sheets, that's why, I'm kinda stressing like, yeah, I would write this, this is what I would put, you know? Um.
Three sheets farting back, you, he said you can type it, write it, whatever you want.
Yeah, that's, that's very generous of him, you know?
That, that's annoying, that's only making me more nervous.
Why?
Because it's, because it's so open-ended that, like
I could write all my notes on those three sheets.
Yeah.
I mean, if you need to do that, but I wouldn't put
Useless problem.
A lot of the stuff you guys have done is overlapping, so some of the stuff, like Excel should be kinda new, but in some ways you guys did it again in lab, certain problems you did in lab again, you also kinda went over certain things. Um, some of the coding logic, like logic itself is kinda the same. So if you do an if statement, if you do an if statement in MATLAB and do it in Excel, you're gonna end up with almost like the same results. Um, just know the differences, like where I said average, average for example is different, you know, MATLAB, it's, it's mean, and, and Excel. It's average.
I thought it's the GL mean.
Which one?
GL mean?
Oh, geographical mean, is it?
Yeah.
Was it Excel or MATLAB?
I think in Excel.
Geometric mean. Um. I don't know if you use it.
Is it up to Stalo?
No, it's a little bit different, um.
I don't even know if we went over that, do we?
Yeah.
Geometric mean, I'd have to look it up, I don't know if I'm mad. But, I pretty much say I wouldn't expect something like that to be on your exam. I, it's not something I've used anytime recent, so. Um. Let's tell you what, let's start, what, oh, log space and lin space. Make sure you understand what log space and lin space is, are, what they are, a few people have problems with log space real generally, if you have a number, two numbers. Um, alright? Ten is equal to ten to the power of one, one thousand is equal to ten to the power of
Three.
There you go, perfect, so when you write log space. Your root doesn't change, your root stays base ten throughout the whole thing. So what log space asks for, and if you look it up, it's gonna say one, your first number, three, and N amount of separations. So if you want twenty different number, you put a twenty there instead of N, if you want one, you put one. Alright? Which I don't think will work, but, worth the try. Lin space. Is different in which it asks for your number, it asks for your start, in this case, we'd say ten, and then our N number would be a thousand. And defaults, I think, a hundred or, or ten, um, anyhow, you put N amount of separations. Alright? So you need to write log space in your root base. So you need to write log space in your root base. And this is in decimal. Yeah? Everyone understand that? I mean, you guys did on the homework, but.
Wait, so in lin space, um, first number is the beginning, second number is the distance, or, or?
Yeah, you can say distance, but I mean, basically your, your final number, so always go, if you. Sit down at MATLAB. Lin space, and if you want. You can see what, what's there, it'll only be give you examples to kinda help visualize it. And I would take whatever I can off this and put it in your notes if you, if you need to, alright, so in this case here, you have. Like this one completely covers what you want, I mean, it covers, and it says here, it explains, it generates N points, so you have X one, your first point, X two, your second point. And, and it could be, I mean technically, if you wanted to go from one thousand to ten. You can do so. It just go in the other direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um. Eight, ten, two, we already said.
And, um, when we don't know the number, so. There are two different types of, um, separations, the ones that we know how many we want, and then the ones that we don't know how many. We just want this many between this and this, that's, that's lin space.
So lin space has a default hundred, yeah, I mean, both of them do the same thing. So both create an array. From this number to this number, and spaces, but this is done in your log domain. So log, in this case here, it's done in log ten domain, okay? So it's, when you get an answer, let's say if we put. Um, five. You're not gonna have five equally spaced numbers from one to three.
I feel like ten, hundred, right, like five numbers of the log ten.
You're gonna have, would you have? Five numbers of the log, so you're not, so.
Five numbers spaced with three, is that it?
Yeah, so I screwed up before, it's not, so you're not gonna have five numbers equally spaced ten to a thousand. You're gonna have five numbers spaced between equally one to, one to three. Until you'll have like, let's say one point five, two, whatever, and just an example, so you would actually have ten. To the one fifth, and then ten to the two, I probably should easily use your example, but. So, all the way up to ten to the third.
Always uses the base part of time now.
Exactly, log space is specifically for log, logarithmic functions. Alright, so I know like there was one of the problems with the, the homework, some people tried to actually use log space with trying to find out the, the VanderWaal equation. You gotta use lin space, you had to have one more extra calculation to take from your, um, log domain into a, a decimal domain.
No, I.
Yeah?
Problem I had.
Um, not just you, man, I'm saying in general.
Oh. Alright.
But you understand this?
Yes.
Alright, how about you? Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright. So anyone have any specific questions about MATLAB?
So lin space is when you want the distance between, no, you want two, you have two numbers, X one and X two. And you want this many of them, this many between this array.
Yeah.
But then if you know the distance between the arrays, so like. What, what is the one that, it's not a lin space or anything, it's just like you put it in.
The bold lines?
Yeah, and then you know how many it is.
Yeah, it's basically, yeah, so you're creating an array, there's multiple ways to create an array, so like, let's say in this case here, we had one. Broken up into twenty pieces from ten, from one to ten. Alright, so you would create an array, if we said this was B, our B would end up looking like, one, one point five, two, two point five, all the way. To ten, so it exists all the way, but you have a total of twenty numbers.
I think that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, so this is, this is what lin space does. On, how can I best put it? Um, I'm trying to think, so usually I use lin space when I know two numbers, okay? Um, let's say I know I have one to two pi, okay? But I don't know how many, how many exact spots I want, and a situation where this would be important, is like if I have a plot. So when you do MATLAB plots, you basically add points. And it creates a straight line to each point until you get something, okay? Well, when I get this array, I might make this a thousand, so I could have a smoother looking curve, you know? But I don't know this exact number until I actually get in there and kinda change it. So, maybe I could accomplish it with a thousand, then I save some computing resources. So I would sit there kinda, you know. See what's best for you, I mean, you could do this, but. I generally more than likely use lin space, you know, just in general, across the board, but know how to use it, how to, what it does, so. I mean, just so you know, this third number. Where I have my lin space, whatever, here, this third number is. Basically. Yeah, your endpoints, by default, it's a hundred, so if you leave a blank, you're gonna get a hundred, if you want a thousand, put a thousand in, you know? Um, one more thing to kinda talk about in general. I don't know how much or to what degree this will be on the exam. But when you have a plot, okay? Kinda know the breakdown of a plot, alright? You know, you already know that's a ball curve, a Gaussian curve, right, more than likely, you probably won't do anything beyond this, you know what a standard deviation is, right? You, you, just the concept, no one's gonna ask you, hey. You know, oh, yeah, solve exactly the standard deviation of, you know, they might ask, what's the command to do it, okay? Um, know that this is your scale, you know, your X scale, your Y, which is real, real basic. But this is gonna be your, your dependent, or your independent variable, this is your dependent. When you have a title, it's always wall versus floor. Alright? So remember that forever, so when you do write a title on, on your Nobel Peace Prize dissertation, you're writing. Wall versus floor, not floor versus wall. Alright? Um, you have a scale, usually when you scale, you have your, your axis. And then you put units in a parentheses, remember what a trend line is, you know? Um. Kinda know the different individual parts of the plot. And I think that should be enough to cover like three different pages.
Do you think there's anything else that we should like study specifically for the MATLAB section?
The big thing is knowing what, what you're doing, um. Know what I want there. Alright. Um. Mean and average, eight, ten, orders of operation, orders of operation. Know what happens, I mean, it's kinda the basic math, but it's a little bit. When you see something like. So let's say four. Times two, divided by two, what's the number you should expect to get?
Four.
Alright? So you have your, what's it called, um. Lambras, yeah, so you do your, um, your exponentials. Parentheses, division, multiplication, subtraction, addition, so. Yeah, no problem, so make sure you know the order operations. Um. If statement we covered, if's a big one, so make sure you understand that. And that's Excel.
Is there an if statement in MATLAB?
So technically there is, but I doubt you guys can do it, you guys haven't gone until like logic, yes, the, the MATLAB. So. It's up to whatever you guys, your lecture is, the eighth or first. It's, um. I don't remember.
I know that we have the exam tomorrow.
So up to here, I don't know, see, saving your work in MATLAB, oh, mat file, know what a mat file is?
The M file?
M file, mat file.
Whatever.
Uh, what did he cover? So your M file, what it is.
What, yeah, that's a lot, just an M file.
Uh, just kinda get the justification.
Some detail. What is an M file anyway? I know how to do it, I know how to do an M file, but what, what is an M file?
Saves a script.
That's it, right? So what else?
Uh, let's see, M file is, uh, what I thought it was. So basically what a M file is, is stores your variables. Um. So you're gonna wanna know that, and you're gonna want what an M file is and all that. Let's see where. Know what I want. So basically, your, your file, your variable is stored in the M file. Trying to think, uh, what I was. I think that's it, tell you what, let me take one quick glance over, you guys got a minute, dude? I wanna make sure I do a thorough job for you. If you need to leave, feel free to, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, see you guys later. Alright, take it easy. So solver we talked about, so kinda know the breakdown of solver. Chart. The trend line, you guys remember about the equation of the trend line, right?
Is R square gonna be on there, all that stuff?
No, but if someone gives you a, a trend line with an equation, and they say find a point.
Is it just slope intercept?
Yeah, it's, it's real simple, it's not, but I think that's it, you know? Longer than I wanted, but sorry, it took so long.